The time is six oh one and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Everybody can pull their microphones in so folks can hear us remotely. And we are gonna begin with the committee of the whole this evening. If you could have a motion by.
Yes, your honor. I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of second ward alderman David Parker, third ward alderman Mike Went, sixth ward alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, alderman large Sonia Berg at the committee of the whole and city council meetings of September first, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Williams. Roll call please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker. Alderman Schoonmaker. Can you see him?
I don't see him. I don't think Alderman Maker is with us this evening.
Okay, Alderman Waldron.
Alderman Waldron is not with us.
Oh, that's right, I knew that. Thank you. Alderman Berg.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Are there any questions on the agenda this evening? Changes, modifications? We'll begin with the agenda items then. Then the first item is strong communities program grant. Round one, KJ Whitley, community development program manager.
Your honor.
I'm sorry.
Your honor, Alderman Schoonmaker will be joining us. He's having technology issues right now.
Does he need assistance? Does he wanna call down or?
If so, I'm sure he'll reach out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, KJ.
All right, good evening, everyone. The community economic and development department would like to apply for the first round of the strong communities program grant. It's an Ida grant. It's funded through the Build Illinois Bonds. In the first round, they have ten million available. The minimum that you can apply for is forty thousand. The maximum you can apply for is two hundred and fifty thousand. We would like to apply for the two hundred and fifty thousand, of course. In this grant, it's available to municipalities, to counties, and land banks. As you know, we're in the midst of our land bank study. It should be completed before the end of the year. We'll have that documentation on whether it's feasible for Moline to have a land bank or whether it's feasible for Rock Island County to have a land bank. So that study is off. But anytime under this grant, you could do demolition, you can do rehab, you can pay for tree cutting, shrubs, grass, and they give you a small amount of money for admin. So again, we would like to apply. The grant is due on September twenty eighth. We were just notified last week of it. So we are asking for consideration to apply for two hundred and fifty thousand. And there's no motion.
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter, a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? And then if we could note for the record that Alderman Schoonmaker has joined us and will be involved in the votes. Hi, Alderman Schoonmaker, sorry about the trouble. Without any discussion, I call for a roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Berg.
Abstain. For what reason? Since I serve on the Ida board.
And Alderman Williams.
Aye. That's good reading.
Six ayes, one abstention.
That motion carries.
Thank you, mayor, can I say one more thing?
Yes, please.
This is round one. They anticipate three rounds, so hopefully this can carry on a little longer for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next item is the enterprise zone expansion. Chris Mathias will be presenting property management coordinator.
Thank you, your honor. I'll be talking about both items two and three here. So the enterprise zone, as you know, is made up of six government entities. It'd be Moline, Rock Island East, Moline, Silvestre, Mylan, and then unincorporated Rock Island County. So what we have here tonight is the enterprise zone board has met and we have two sites we'd like to add to the enterprise zone. One of those is adjacent to three M. There's an actual expansion at the three M plant up in Cordova. And then the second being the new vibrant headquarters in the former Sam's Club building on John Deere Road. So in order for the board to add to the zone, every single community has to approve not only the ordinance but also a resolution that updates the IGA that we all share. So that's what I'm here tonight to ask you for. This is a state-supported measure. The enterprise zone board also supports it. So we'd ask for your approval of item two, which would amend the ordinance to get this done.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Berg.
Alderman Berg.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Do we, do we need a motion for the intergovernmental agreement as well?
We do.
I make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer to approve the enterprise zone intergovernmental agreement as presented, and we have a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on what's proposed? Roll call please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. The next item is the library roof replacement presented by Rod Schick, municipal services general manager.
Thank you, mayor, good evening, council. The roof book at the library has failed, is currently being held down by sandbags. And so notice for bid was published and those bids were received. On July twenty first, we received six bids with Jim Geese Roofing submitting the lowest responsive and responsible bid, the amount of six hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars. The staff recommends approval.
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, rep. The next item is the crossing guard hiring. Chief Galt.
Thank you, mayor, good evening, council. As you know, the city of Moline provides crossing guards for the school district in a longstanding agreement that goes back about ten years. We have twenty crossing guards and one supervisor, so a total of twenty-one. As we prepare for the beginning of the school year, we received notice that at the time that I submitted this, three, and now I have four crossing guards that have resigned their positions. As you know, our crossing guards are frequently senior citizens or retirees who dedicate this not because they get a luxurious salary but because it's part of their volunteerism and their protection of the children in our school zones. So it is a, it is a difficult position for them to be in in our coronavirus era. So that leaves me with some positions that are unfilled. We have a pool of alternates. One alternate is only able to do that in the fall over a short period of time before they winter in another state. And then the other two alternates don't wanna be full-time, they just wanna be substitutes. So I'm here to, before you, to ask for an exception to the hiring freeze that is in place to fill the crossing guard positions that are vacant, which I had submitted three, we're up to four. As well as I'd like to advertise and establish a deeper pool of alternates to try to gain a bigger substitute pool. So I'd ask for you to consider that. I'd recommend that we fill those positions and have HR advertise for both those and alternates.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Williams and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion? Alderman Went.
Thank you, your honor. I had a quick question. So I'm supportive of this 'cause obviously we need to kinda get through this and make sure that we're covered for. But it's my understanding that the, the agreement for which we supply all the crossing guards for the school district, that agreement probably is coming up in the next year or two. Will these be like employees or we, where we might have an issue down the road if we wind up having to, if we're no longer employing them? Or is it just kind of like an hourly thing? How does that exactly work?
Yeah, I don't know if Allison is on the line if she wants to comment about the history of the employment. They only receive the twenty dollars a day for their crossing guard duties. So I don't wanna speak out of turn for proper HR terminology. So I don't know if Allison could answer that question there.
Sure, chief. I would say yes, like the chief said, they're paid only when they work. They would be and have historically been city employees. We did look at using a staffing agency. It's been a number of years ago. So we could certainly look into that if that's something the council wanted to do. But the way it's, I think the chief's presentation tonight would be that they are city employees.
Alderman Went.
Is there any concern then if, if our situation changes in the next two years and we're no longer providing these? Are we then going to be liable for unemployment? Sever, I mean, if we are, as a city, are no longer providing this service and the school district would be into the future, how would that affect these people if we're hiring more on as employees?
Sure, there's a potential for unemployment costs depending on how many we're able to hire. If they're alternates, it's based on their wages. So if they're not working, so like the chief asked for, the substitutes or alternates is what we call them. If they're not working, our liability is lower or, you know, depending on how often they're working. But yeah, that is, that is a risk that you take as having them as employees.
Is there any other comment or question? Alderman Parker.
Thank you, chief. So we're, so we're three short. What three locations do we not currently have somebody crossing or do we use in police officers for that?
Yeah, we're using the, the alternates, the supervisor, as well as our traffic unit. So they're all covered currently. And I can, I can tell you the, the volume is significantly lower this year because of the hybrid learning system. So traffic and pedestrian crossing is, I mean, I don't have an exact number, but my, my guess would be a third of what we normally see.
Thank you.
So I have a question for you. With that transition, do we still feel like the intersections that are staffed are still appropriate to be staffed? I don't know what, what causes an intersection to qualify, but.
I don't know that answer other than the resolution from two thousand and ten, which is twelve twenty-one, two thousand and ten, is embedded into a TIP agreement that says that we won't reduce the number of crossing guards.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how we got there. I know there is a mechanism to, to do a study through DOT. I'm not sure that that would be a great thing to do at this point because I don't know that we would have accurate crossing counts because of the reduced pedestrian crossing.
Thank you for explaining that. Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, chief. The next item is pedestrian crossing ordinance. Marty Vonix, city administrator.
Thank you, mayor, council. This is a follow-up to a question of the Garfield School crosswalk signal on Sixteenth Street between Twenty-Fifth and Twenty-Sixth Avenue. This was brought up at the last city council meeting. An initial review by Public Works looked at removing this signal at one point and removing the mast arms, concrete pad, repairing location, disengaging the power supply. The estimate for that, removing that structure was about three thousand dollars. And at the time, mid-summer, it was determined by staff, including myself and the city public works director, that the project could wait as it was not critical. And we wanna make sure unnecessary costs were being incurred during the budget freeze. So recently, due to recent storm confusion created by that existing traffic signal, the fact that the light was not flashing yellow, cars were slowing down, stopping, and of course, causing some confusion. So we looked at removing just the signal heads and leaving the mast arms and structure in place for the time being. Staff estimates that cost for removing that signal pad would be about six hundred dollars worth of staff time. There'd be no outside costs involved. We would not remove the mast arm, its base, or remove this crosswalk, crosswalk paint. All this can be done at later time, likely in the next budget year. So in order to effectuate this, we need to have council approve a resolution changing the ordinance, taking this crosswalk, crosswalk, signalized crosswalk off the list of approved signalized crosswalks. And that's located in chapter twenty of our city ordinances. So that's the story there.
So just to clarify, are you looking for us to approve the partial removal and the removal in the ordinance?
We'd remove it out of the ordinance altogether.
Remove it out of the ordinance altogether, but are you gonna dismantle all the?
And then we'll take the head off, yeah.
Just take the head off?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's the.
It just will be a mast arm there for the time.
So that's the recommendation from staff?
Yep.
So that's the recommendation. Somebody got a motion?
Motion to approve, Parker.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Went.
One of the things you had mentioned was the blinking yellow light. I think that that was a question that had come up regarding battery backup and those sorts of things.
Yeah.
I think that that was a question we were gonna look into. Do we have some that have that? I just wanna make sure for clarification 'cause I think there was some confusion last meeting.
So I think we're gonna talk about that. Marty has an informational for us a little bit later on to talk about the dark traffic signals. This is that one specific kind of pedestrian crossing spot that we were thinking wasn't well utilized and couldn't find a better home. So is there any other discussion on this? Roll call please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Don't, do we have another this evening? We have one other by Dirk Price, corporate counsel.
Good evening, mayor, council. The other this evening is, just to alert the council, that is part of the process of identifying the properties that shouldn't annex into the city because they have water service and are within a certain distance. We identified that coming up in about, you know, about eleven months ago. Due to certain transitions, we've been slowly making our way toward that. And letters are going out to the public to alert them that they do need to annex into the city again. And some of those will certainly lead to some consternation about taxes and so forth. We just wanted you to be aware that that's going to be happening. And so if you get the angry phone call, why must I do that? It's because that's how people got the water in the first place. And it may have been thirty, forty years ago that it happened. But nevertheless, the time has come and that's going to be happening. And we just wanted you to be aware and apprised. That's it.
Thank you. We'll now move into the informationals. And I think all of these are Marty Vonix. The first item is the generator update.
Yeah, I'm full of information tonight, I suppose. So last week, I came to you with, for the last meeting, I came to you with an emergency request regarding our emergency generator that supports the central station facility. And your authorization was up to a hundred thousand dollars to replace this generator. So the first thing we've done, I just wanna give you an update, is we've looked at making sure that the vulnerability there is reduced. And so we found a portable generator that works. We estimate the generator rental installation up to four months right now is gonna cost about fourteen thousand dollars. In the meantime, we're looking at alternatives to replace, or not alternatives, but what we need to do to replace that generator. And I'll be back to you a little bit later with that information and where we're headed with that. So.
Thank you.
I'll stay up here.
Yeah, all right, the next item, I'll queue up every one of them.
Any questions, I guess I should.
Oh, are there any questions on the generator? The next item is mowing, storm, mowing slash storm debris slash leaf picking program.
Right, so all those are kinda interrelated. Obviously, Public Works does that work. Just wanna give you some updates here. First of all, cleanup services on the main routes to and around the schools was the first priority as they were opening just after the storm occurred. And so that was completed a week ago Monday. And then the following day, the staff started the sweep of the city from west to east. And so that's going, currently occurring right now. I've asked our GIS department and Public Works to work together to develop a map that I'll provide to the city council so you can see where the progress is over the next couple of weeks. As of today, they're no longer hauling storm debris to Rainies for disposal. They were required to cut to seven feet, and that's difficult for some people to do. So now staff is hauling everything to the closest park, wherever they may be, and putting it in the parking lots. And by not having to cut the materials, shortening the distance for hauling the debris, they should be able to do the work a little bit more efficiently and complete the cleanup of residential properties. The cleanup in the parks will take longer, but that can be managed over a longer period of time without significantly impacting the community. And between leaf pickup and, and snow events, city staff will be in there to clean up that debris over time. However, in order to get this job done and then get ready for leaf pickup, the staff is going to deploy working ten-hour days, Monday through Friday, and six hours on Saturdays for the next three to four weeks. That way, we can get the job done. If we don't do that, it's gonna take up to six to seven weeks to get the job done. And then we're pushing right into the fall cleanup with leaves. So they're gonna go ahead and start that process here very, within the next several days. So that's the storm cleanup report. I can answer any questions? I got JD and Rod are both here to answer any questions you guys might have.
I have a question about the crews that are moving from, so they're moving from west to east. And I know they've been through my neighborhood this week. And will that be the final pass?
We'll pull out the microphone so they can. No, more, more material continues to be brought out even after, and through those areas that we've cleaned up. So we're hoping that this is the lengthy pass-through. Then we'll, you know, be able to reduce the staff that's doing the cleanup and go back through and hit, hit the spots where there's additional material out.
I'm just wondering, though, with, you know, like the, the idea of efficiency and that kind of thing, that it would be reasonable to tell the community that if you don't have your debris out by X date, just to make it more efficient, it's taxpayers' money. And that is important, that they need to have everything out to the curb by X date. Is that, I'm just proposing that as part of the plan.
No, we can do that. We'll, we can set a date and we'll make that announcement. We'll put out a press release, go to social media, make sure that everybody knows that here's a date. You know, we can't keep coming back and back again and again.
I think that it would be a reasonable expectation by the community 'cause they were thinking that we were waiving the fees to do that service. So we would, they would always have that as their backup. If they weren't able to get the debris out in the window, then they could always go back to the regular service provided. Alderman Potter.
Yeah, I'm wondering what's wrong with immediately the date. I mean, I think most people should have had an opportunity by now, by now, to have that debris out where it should be ready. I would think that immediately tomorrow, we oughta be able to tell people it's not on the curb, and we passed by, we're not coming back.
It's your direction, I can write it, write that up tomorrow.
Well, Alderman Potter and I are aligned on this one, which is exciting. How does the rest of the council feel? Alderman Parker?
I think immediately is fine. I guess I'm wondering, Rod or JD or whoever's in charge of that, what street are you guys on moving west to east? What street are you guys at?
It kind of zigzags. We were concentrating around Stevens Park area. And so, but basically, we're, we're pretty much Seventh Street all the way across north to south. And then we continue east, especially, like I say, more on the north side of town. We're further east, there are probably another four or five blocks in that area.
So when do you anticipate being done? Because it's been, what, three weeks now? And we're at Seventh Street? And we have to get to fifty-something plus, you know, for Alderman Waldron lives. I mean, what's the anticipation here? Because I'm on Twelfth Street and it's still piled up here.
Yep, the goal is, is, you know, another five to six weeks to get through this. You know, it's, it goes in spurts where there are areas that are really thick. And that was like, for example, the Stevens Park. Around there was, was really slammed. There was a lot of big, big, big trees that were down that had to be collected. And so there are other parts of town that are, that's a lot lighter. So it'll move faster and slower as we move through those different locations.
Is there an opportunity, if I, you don't mind me following up?
Yeah.
Is there an opportunity to offload some of this work onto a contractor? I know we, I was reading in some of our documentation here, we have some Cures Act money that's available. That's for COVID, but you know, perhaps it's because we don't have as many people working as we typically do. You know, if it was written up correctly, maybe there's an opportunity to, to pile some of that in there. I don't know, just right now, it's, you know, it's kind of a hazard, especially if you're in the forties, thirties and forties street area. It's gonna be a hazard if it's gonna be sitting there for another month.
So Rod, I noticed last, last evening, I was on Second Street, and it had brush on it yesterday. So did we do from First to Seventh today?
No, a lot of that is material that's, again, I don't know exactly where you're at or whether it was cleared previously. But like I said, that material is still continuing to come out, even in areas where we've collected.
I got the impression that no one had gone down. It's behind Jewel.
Down, okay.
So no one had gone down 'cause there were piles almost on every yard. I'm just thinking that the progress seems better than five to six weeks. Does the five to six weeks include the cleanup at the parks and in the parking lots?
No, that would not include the parks and parking lot areas. That would be the residential areas.
Interesting. Alderman Berg and then Alderman Williams.
So this question is for Rod. So we're saying it's been three weeks and we're, we're so far to the Seventh Street. So now you're saying five weeks and we're gonna be through all of the neighborhoods in Moline then? The residential neighborhood?
Yeah, actually, the first week was spent addressing just opening up streets, dealing with, with safety type issues, things of that nature, as opposed to a thorough cleanup. The second week was primarily cleaning up the main route around the schools in order to make sure those were safe. And so the actual sweep through town has really just been started last week. So that's, that's, it's really more of a week's worth, I guess, is, is what we've done as far as the sweep through the entire town.
Thank you. Alderman Williams.
I got an opportunity to watch them around Stevens Park area. And it's amazing how they get so much done and just what one big pile, how long it could take to get rid of that. You know, it's almost impossible to get through the city, I would imagine. I guess my only concern is like at Carstens Park, you know, they got a lot of the big stuff away and they made a gigantic pile inside the park out of the way from everybody. And at Stevens Park. And because it's so dry and all that, you know, is just kindling and it's only gonna take one match this fall and it's gonna, it's gonna ignite. So I just, I don't know what the answer to that is. But what do you think we should do or could do to, to get all that out quicker?
You know, and that's, that's kind of part of the reason why I wanted to move stuff into the parks because I, if, hopefully that doesn't happen. But if that were, in the places that we've got it, it'd be far better than in front of homes. And that, 'cause it's the same problem we've got there. So yeah, I don't, I don't know what, what the overall answer is.
I mean, we're just, we're picking away. It's a monster pile. And, you know, we're taking it one day at a time to get through it. The addition of the overtime should help. Hopefully, we can sort through some of this stuff. Going to, probably as this gets going, one of the other things, I guess, that could be evaluated and looked at is, and I can, you know, get a proposal out to see about having a contractor come in and just chip, or I'm sorry, tub grind in the parks. I know Midland Davis would do that here locally. Even Rainies might, you know, redeploy their grinder to come and grind up the material and haul it away, and maybe we get some pricing on some of that.
No, I think that makes sense, especially because this is such a unique situation. This isn't something that we would normally absorb into our typical workday. So I think the council would be open to that.
And so any of the gutters, even after it's done, you know, we encourage the homeowners to get out and sweep in front of their own homes because there's so many twigs and so many branches still left. When it comes time to do leaf pickup, it's going to be a disaster. It'll all be intermingled.
And that's another reason why I wanted to try to expedite this as quickly as I can, so that I can deploy my sweepers out and start in on that process, because we need to address that as well.
Outstanding.
Rod, I know you worked overtime the first week. Did you discontinue overtime the second and third week?
Yes, because we'd addressed all of the emergency issues, and I knew that we were trying to keep a handle on our overtime issues and then evaluate how the progress was going to go, really see what the full extent of this damage and the debris collection was going to be.
And so that's fine, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to clarify. When we talked about overtime, what we talked about at the council floor, what was approved was that we would be just communicated with what the overtime was. There weren't restrictions set for overtime, and I think there's been some misunderstanding over the last few months, at least I've gotten feedback from.
Yeah, no, I think what really was about doing a real good evaluation, so that we can come back to you and not just have worked without any real thought process.
Just as long as everybody understands that there was not a restriction on overtime.
No, we've, I know that we've sent other items up and have gotten approval for doing overtime as well, so beyond this.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? You don't need anything from, oh, Alderman Moyer?
I just agree with, if we can find some way to get additional resources, whether it's through the CARES Act or something. There are a lot of dangerous spots. I know our city clerk would probably agree with me. Just behind, on my way here today, I just noticed some jogger came back behind a huge pile of brush right out into my driving path. I was going fairly slow, but I could see how this could be with kids on bikes and stuff. There are a lot of sidewalks that are currently covered with huge six, eight, 10-foot piles of brush. And, you know, I just think that we need to get at least those safety areas out there.
Yeah, I think I'm picking up that vibe from the council, is that we're looking at, you know, anything that you can do, appreciate the plan, but anything you can do to expedite the plan, we're open to. Certainly overtime is acceptable, and we'd like to look at what you can take off the city employees' backs and get taken care of quickly. Is that the consensus of the council? Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Parker?
Thank you. Rod, so there's, everybody's, you know, it's a singular focus, it seems, on getting all this picked up. So in the light of that, what's not getting done?
Well, I believe the city administrator's going to talk to you about what we're doing with Moyer. I think that'll be coming up. So we've gotten as creative as we can to try to stay on top of just about everything we can. The drought conditions have helped us immensely. And everybody's praying for rain, not me.
How many crews are picking up debris? And how do you define a crew?
Well, basically, we have about three crews of three to four people, sometimes a little bit more that are out there picking up. And then our arborist is working with a couple of people to address the remaining tree branches and things that are still hanging and stuck up in trees and that sort of stuff.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Parker?
I can perhaps answer that, because there were six dump trucks and a smaller truck at the Shell Station this morning. So I think there's a lot of assets out there working. So, you know, they're doing a good job. I just want to be sure we are supporting you and your team enough to get the job done, because by the time we get over to the, you know, 40s, it's going to be a long time from now. And I think there's going to be a real weariness of our residents by the time we actually finally get there. So anything, I'm all in favor of anything we can do to expedite this.
Yeah, I think there's some anxiety out there that they may have been missed, and they're stuck with their pile. So I really think we need to work on that communication. Alderman Schoonmaker?
I'm really surprised, Rod. Is there, when you said there's only that many crews, are we, is there a bottleneck somewhere that's not labor? Is it, you know, a limited number of trucks or equipment? Or why wouldn't we have more crews out working on that?
I have 35 employees between parks, streets, and sanitation. 10 employees every day go there to sanitation. We wind up with another five or six addressing other maintenance issues and things for the cemeteries, Green Valley, facility maintenance and so forth. And so it gets us down to about 20 people that are available on a daily basis to kind of move into those areas. And so then with scheduled time off, unscheduled time off, that's kind of where our numbers
So it's not any other resource scarcity, it's labor?
So can we just have another update on it next meeting? Or maybe, because we're two weeks out, maybe I could send something out of what our vision is to expedite. Alderman Potter?
How many, how many positions, full-time open positions do we have in Public Works that potentially could be there?
To do the crew work that you're describing? Because we have over 100.
Five, six, and 12. In my areas, I've got, hold on, I've got to scroll through. Six.
Potentially one more crew.
Thank you.
All right, Marty, mowing and...
So mowing, so again, Rod is, we've been talking about mowing, and of course, because of the dry spell that we're having, the need for mowing isn't as crucial as it has been. They are working, staff from utilities, engineering have stepped up to do additional mowing. If additional support is required beyond, and also recreation staff has also been doing some mowing. So if additional support is required beyond that, we'll engage a private contractor, likely the company that does our mowing nuisance projects for neighborhood improvement. And so that will go into place. So that's mowing. So mowing's okay because of that lower, because of the drought. Yep. So let's talk about leaf vacuuming. That season will be paused in the very near future, and this is a program that was not necessarily cut from the COVID budget adjustments. And so we're looking at continuing that program. We're going to sit down and get creative in terms of how to do it, do it well, because we know that if we don't do it well, the leaves clog the storm sewers and run into all kinds of problems. So we'll look at, I'll type any kind of alternative to make that work. But I'll be back to you in the next couple of weeks to tell you a little bit more about that.
Thank you. Any other questions in that category? A question from Alderman Berg.
Marty, can you tell me, are they picking up bags, the brown bag, leaf bags, right now without stickers? And if we are, where do we have that listed on our website?
Stickers are required at this point. That ended...
Today.
Tuesday. Yeah, today?
Yes, today.
Yeah.
Stickers, I'm sorry, say that again?
Stickers are required at this point.
They just went into effect, so if people had them out last week and they weren't picked up?
Yeah.
They were picked up. They were affirmative, they were picked up. Okay. Alderman Wynn?
If they're, because I know of at least one location where they've been out there for the last two and a half weeks, and they've never been picked up without stickers on it. If that's the situation, just call down to Public Works and let them know that those were out there from before.
They can use the Go app or just send me the information, the address, I'll make sure.
Okay, I'll make sure of that. Okay, thanks.
Any issues with debris or anything, just make sure I know, and I'll make sure our guys are getting on it, which they've always done really good at, so.
Thank you. The next item is dark traffic signals policy.
So an inquiry was made in the administrator's office about our policy during prolonged power outages as it pertains to traffic signals. And the question is, you know, what is our policy? When the traffic lights go out and stay out, do we have battery backup? And I think Alderman went, that was, I think, the direction you were headed earlier. Do we put up temporary stop signs? I've asked Public Works to provide me with what that written policy description is. They've had some meetings with IDOT. We're sorting that out right now. I just received some information late today, so I wasn't able to put it together. So at the next meeting, we'll have it all laid out for you, exactly what is going on in terms of that. I can tell you that we have 107 traffic signals. Forty-four of those are IDOT-controlled, and they reimburse us for maintaining those. And then 11, now 10, are signalized crosswalks. So none of them have battery backup. And so we'll take a look at what that policy is, what it entails in terms of cost, and we'll be back to the city council with that, so.
So regarding the policy, does that impact whether or not we put stop signs out?
It does, yeah. There's some rules regarding stop signs that IDOT has for their signals, but I want to make sure that I understand it first before I start delivering information to all of you.
Alderman Wynn?
Your Honor, did you say that there is no battery backup in any of them, or there's just no battery backup in the crosswalks?
Yeah, none, my understanding, and JD's going to be up here in a second, but we have no battery backup on any traffic signal, including crosswalks.
Including IDOT as well?
Yes, IDOT told us that the two signalized lights that came in at the bottom of River Drive, right at the new ramps on the new bridge, came in with an Iowa DOT spec, and they do have a battery backup. But they couldn't tell me if they were lithium ion or if they're lead acid. But those two do have a battery backup.
I forgot about those. Yes, but everything else, no.
Alderman Potter?
I'm fairly certain that the state DOT policy is that none of their signals have battery backups. And a preliminary discussion I had with the traffic control specialist was that a battery backup at a traffic signal just over one nose is in the thousands of dollars, like somewhere in the $3,000 to $4,000 range minimum, is my understanding. So it's not like, not likely that we're looking at putting those things in.
Well, I'll have a full report for you next time around to affirm or not.
Any other comments, questions? Next item, stormwater.
I had a question.
Sorry, I can't see you, Alderman Parker, because you're...
I'm sorry about that.
See you.
So here's my question, is, Marty, going forward, when we do reconstructions of large intersections where lights have to be replaced, can we be given an option for battery backup? You know, some smaller intersections, it's, you know, pretty straightforward that everybody stops and goes, you know, it's just maybe not worth the money. But I'm thinking larger intersections, 41st Street and Avenue of the City, something like that, where there's a lot of, there's a lot of movement going on in all directions. It might really help if we did have those, you know, the option to have the battery backup on something like that.
As we move forward, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If we could get prices both ways, yeah, just so we know, so we know the cost. And then it's, you know, our fault or responsibility to make sure that those decisions are made.
Yeah, we will look at that, and I'll work with Public Works and Engineering to manifest that. And then, you know, battery technology's improving every day, so maybe it'll become cheaper and cheaper. We'll see.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that is necessarily the right course. We don't know.
Find out.
But I think that having a policy is helpful to the community, because they don't really know what to expect, and it's confusing, and why are they all dark, and who's supposed to do what? So even a stop sign being put up, and who does that, it'd be great. Okay, stormwater utility update.
Moving forward, last meeting, the request was, after we had looked at a plat, final plat subdivision, I believe from Alderman Wynn, what is our policies? What are we doing with stormwater utility in the packet that you received? You received a memo from myself outlining our stormwater utility, including basic information about permitting, and also a document, as you can see up on the wall here, that shows...
Can you all see it remotely? Can you see the stormwater utility infrastructure map?
Okay. So this map shows our stormwater utility infrastructure. It also includes some of the private detention basins and other areas. And so when I asked our really good GIS department to put this together, I didn't tell them to separate the private from the public. And so this kind of gives you, though, an idea of the immensity of our stormwater utility infrastructure. There's a lot to take care of. My eyes are failing me, but the mileage of, oh, 119, hey, stop. Miles of stormwater mains. So there's a lot there. So what I'm going to ask our GIS group to do is to divide this map into quadrants, and so we can zoom in a little bit, and so you can all see what's going on there. So in the memorandum, I outlined a couple of challenges. One is that because of the composition of our environmental manager, normally, we would have a five-year rotation on the private stormwater utility structures in terms of inspections. We haven't been able to do that as much as we'd like to this year, although Tony, Lodi and his people are doing the job to the best they can. The other thing is the stormwater fund is showing a fairly low fund balance, and we're going to have to deal with that challenge in the future if we want to continue to maintain our utility infrastructure. But with your input, as we look at CIP and other things, we'll be coming back to the city council with some recommendations as part of the 2021 budget as we move forward. And I know that Alderman Wynn had some questions as the follow-up to this memo, and I did send him his responses, and I'll share that with the rest of the city council, but I was running out of time this afternoon to do that, unless Alderman Wynn wants to bring up any of those questions.
Sorry, I was muted. No, I'll wait till you get a chance to answer all of them, and if you're going to send it out to everyone, I want to give you the time to answer those.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions or comments on this topic? Thank you so much, Marty.
Can I ask a question of Alderman Wynn?
Yes, you may ask, Alderman.
Alderman Wynn, can I just share that email with everybody?
Absolutely, yeah. That's not a problem at all. I figured with your answers, they're going to need the questions, so yeah, that'd be great.
All right, very good. And I want to thank Tony for, Lodi, for putting answers to those questions, so that was key.
The next item is bikeways plan update.
Again, last meeting, the city council, again, looked at, as part of the same plat subdivision, what are we doing with bikeways? What is the bikeway system? How are we integrating that into our community? In response to that question, the city's Complete Streets Committee talked and determined that implementing the mowing bikeway systems could be best accomplished by including bikeway systems development as part of the overall Complete Streets project. And you will see in your agenda packet, a project action report outlining specifics of that initiative put together by our community development director, Jeff Anderson. There is an opportunity for us to do a study and to figure out how to implement all of that, and what priorities should be placed on which bikeways and routes. That could be done in-house, but that would take a fairly long amount of time. Planning staff, without looking at any, you know, talking to really any consultants or anything, that a study to draft a policy report and how this might be implemented would cost anywhere between $40,000 to $60,000. And they also believe that this would be a project that the IDOT State Planning and Research Grant Program would fund, and we would probably have to come up with about 20% to 30% of that. But having said that, at one point, there was some proposal by the mayor that, some time ago, that we establish a more formal planning committee to look at the opportunities to best prioritize and most effectively execute our road maintenance network. And rather than just have a Complete Streets Committee and a Bikeways Committee, but to have a Mobility Committee, a committee that looks at all of our transportation opportunities and how we move people through the city of Moline. Technology is changing a lot of that. Pretty soon, we're going to see autonomous cars, more people are riding bikes. I haven't seen them here yet, but eventually, we might see the scooters. They call that micro-transportation or some funny word like that. So the committee, a working group that we recommend, would include staff, council members, and community stakeholders. And I think that would be initially the best way to start this process. And then in the next budget year, if funds are available, to look at perhaps doing a study that would more formalize and provide more implementation-type strategies for incorporating some of our bikeways, but also look at a lot of the other mobility opportunities the city has as we move forward.
Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I've got two things. One is the Complete Streets Committee met on Friday, so maybe this is a little update to that memo. I'm not sure exactly when that was written, but... But coming out of that meeting, we kind of came to the conclusion that we were... Our goal was that we would, by the end of the year, be able to have a policy out to the council for us to adopt, as well as integrating some of those issues as far as the Bike Ways Plan into the zoning and redevelopment, like sidewalk ordinances that we currently have. The plan that I think was referenced in that memo is a much larger... Maybe you've seen, the example that we've been talking about is in Des Moines. They have, you know, a 180-page diagrams, full color, all of that, which is a great thing to have, but you don't necessarily have to have that to start implementing the, or creating a policy that can start guiding us forward. So I think we'll be able to get that done. And I guess that gets into the second question. You had mentioned no longer having, or maybe I misheard you, not having the Complete Streets, but now having a mobility committee. What would be the difference? I mean, the Complete Streets has MetroLink, has people from the community on it, has, I'm an Alderman that's on it, staff, police. I guess what would be the difference? Because we've got somebody from the biking community. We actually discussed having somebody from the schools come on board with that. I guess what would be the difference?
I don't know if there's much difference, other than maybe the name.
Then I think we should probably just continue with the same group. I mean, I think it's a good working group as we're moving forward. I think we're gelling, and actually on Friday, I thought we had an amazing meeting that was really super productive.
My sense is that, you know, Complete Streets is doing a great job. But, you know, I think as related to CIP, which I'll talk about next, you know, we need to look at Complete Streets, but Complete Transportation. So, you know, it could be more than streets. But I don't think we disagree.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yep.
So I just want, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alderman Wynn.
I was just going to ask real quick if that also includes traffic calming with the Complete Streets?
Yeah, I think it includes everything.
Because I know that's something I've been hearing a lot about, you know, cars move pretty quick. And as we've talked about, it'd be nice to address that as well.
What did you say, traffic calming?
Traffic calming, just slowing some traffic down on neighborhood streets.
C A L.
Calming, yes, got it.
We got a few raceways in town that...
Yes, we do, indeed. So, and I was going to ask about the sidewalks. We're kind of coming up on that time of year where we identify what, you know, the missing links that we want to do next. And I understand that we have some that are rolling over, but we may want to revisit that. Is that the organization that will determine if those priorities are set properly? Before it goes to budget? Great, great. Sounds like a good plan. So now it's a mobility committee. There you go. Done. Next item, Rebuild Illinois Capital Improvement Plan.
Again, follow-up to the last meeting, questions were asked about what are we doing to rebuild Illinois funds? A question, you know, the first answer is, when talking to engineering staff and Public Works and others, the opportunity to use that money to do some improvements this year are going to be hard because we're coming up on the cold season. You have to do engineering and all those type of things. So the good news is we'll still have that money set aside to do capital improvements, perhaps in 2021. So quite known on that process. I know Public Works is currently reviewing past and current CIP projects. And they're going to be, we're going to be meeting next week to look at those. We're going to look at the existing assets that we have, look at the things like deferred maintenance, condition assessments, documentation. We'll look at the inventory of material and all those type of things to develop a plan for the city council to look at. Now, part of that will also be a review of current and future revenue sources, which includes state and federal grants, Economic Development Administration, or EDA, which has a lot more funding due to COVID, EPA, I E P A, and other sources. And of course, Rebuild Illinois. So the last step in the process really is presenting this plan to you as a city council so that we can reconcile those plans and those ideas and those recommendations to the city council's goals, your input from residents and stakeholders, looking also at the sustainability, the investment required, the public benefit in ROI. So all those things need to be taken into consideration. And so we're moving pretty quickly at the staff level. But I really believe that a good CIP plan needs obviously input from you. And so based on all those factors, we'll have something for you, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks. And then incorporate that as part of the budget process. And then we'll also develop a five-year plan as well that you can take a look at and lay it out, so.
So Marty, I wanted to ask you, so part of our cost savings that staff have proposed were the gap between the estimate and the actual, as bid, for three different capital projects. Do you know what that total was? I think it was like over a million, wasn't it?
I don't know. I know like for crack ceiling, which I've got a little information...
No, not that. JD, which one approach? So there were three capital projects that had been estimated and in the budget at X amount. The as-bid came in significantly lower, like to the tune of a total of a million dollars. Do you recall that?
I can't say vividly, I don't. But Carol's got a spreadsheet with all the running totals on it, so I'm sure that if she's dialed up with us right now, she can probably quote the amounts.
So I don't need an exact quote. Were there overestimates or not? I mean, that was my recollection. You don't know if there were overestimates.
Yeah, we'll find the answer for that question.
The reason that I want the council to be aware of it is that I'm guessing that that money was restricted for capital improvement of streets. Is that fair to say?
I can't even begin to answer you at this moment, so.
JD, is that fair, those capital improvement projects that were in the CIP before, weren't they M F T and restricted?
It would be, yeah, I was going to say, depending on which columns they're in, yeah, there are some restrictions on how they can be used. Yep.
So I'm thinking that really, we really need to buckle down and come up with some projects because we'll have that rollover. It's not like we can spend it on something else. It has to be invested on capital improvement.
Things like 19th Avenue, that project took money from the capital improvements tranche, sewer, water, to complete the entire project. So, yeah, there's money in the different funds. And so we'll take a look at those, and we'll look at how we can leverage grants and some other things.
Great. Any questions? Oh, we got some questions. Alderman Parker?
Marty, it was a couple meetings ago, I can't remember exactly when. I think it was asked if we could, on the website, show the five-year CIP so we know what was going on. I just checked, and it still just has 2020 CIP on there.
I will look into that.
Thank you.
Alderman Wynn?
I think it was, and I can't put my fingers on it right now, but I know Carol had put together how those overestimations and the bids coming in lower wound up affecting the reserve funds for the CIP. I know she's got a good spreadsheet on that. So if she could send that out to all of us, I think that that would be really helpful. And part of that was, I think, if you remember right, when this all first started, it was originally, we were told that our CIP was actually in the negative. And then once we worked through it, I think we were quite a bit into the positive. So to the mayor's point, we are going to have, we do have some additional funds in those reserves, not necessarily as much as we would have because of some spending otherwise. But from what we're going to budget and what we've got in reserves, we should be able to get quite a bit of work done next year. But we need to have engineering start to do the engineering now, rather than waiting until after we've completed the budget. Because from my understanding, that has been one of the big bottlenecks, is that engineering hasn't been started on some of these projects until after the full budget has been completed. So we don't have projects sitting on the shelves ready to go. So when we wind up with a little bit of extra money, we can't get those things done. So I think that that would be helpful in a way to move forward. And if that's something you need to talk with engineering, come back to us and get formal direction from staff on, or from council to start doing engineering on those projects. Please do that and come back to us on that.
We will do that. Thank you, Mayor Alderman Wynn. I'm going to get off the stage here in a few minutes.
No, you have a whole update. Is there any other questions about rebuilds? Now we've had this long conversation, when do we expect to have a proposal from staff on how you'd recommend?
October 15, or, I'm sorry, September 15.
Thank you. The final information is the administrative update.
So just a couple things, and I'll get off the podium here. Overtime report, so, you know, the discussion of overtime earlier when Rod was up here, I want to, I'll fall on the sword a little bit. When I started here, I would get these overtime reports. I'm like, oh, that's interesting, and I put it in the file. And I didn't realize that the time that council had directed me to pass those on to you. So I had, in turn, created a new report that showed, I think you all received it in your packet, that showed this year versus last year since May. So we'll just keep adding to that report, so you'll have a running total. And I'm happy to send it to you in an Excel spreadsheet if you want to look at it that way. So that's where we are on overtime report. Number two, park restrooms, starting on August 26, all park restrooms are now open and cleaned and sanitized by Service Master Restoration. That's so that we're using them, and that will be eligible for Cure funding. The plan is that they'll stay open through October. And the porta-potties are all, should have been removed by the end of business today. Third, Alderman Parker had asked about the crack ceiling program. And I sent you an update with that, and I think we have a map. Yep, there's the map that should have been in your packet as well, which shows where all the crack ceiling was done this year. As of June 8, that was completed. And that came in under budget at eighty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. A hundred thousand dollars had been budgeted for that. Number four, Emerald Ash Borer update, that was also a request of last council meeting. The city, Arboris, reports that the city this year so far has removed 42 ash trees in 2020. Thirty-two were moved by our team, and 10 have been removed by contractors. We have five additional trees under contract that should be removed soon. And 11 of those trees were in city parks. The rest were located on the street Parkway. I was looking at the Parks Department goals for 2020. And in that report, it indicated that the parks had over 500 ash trees. And so depending upon how things go, it's going to be some years before we get to them all. So I just wanted to give you that update. Number five, tanker truck incident on August 21, a Friday afternoon. The Moline Fire Police Departments were dispatched to South Avenue, 19th Street. A rollover crash involving a petroleum tanker. It was carrying 7,600 gallons of diesel fuel and was leaking onto the roadway. Of course, fire personnel came out, as well as police. Simultaneous to this, workers from the bridge construction site also responded with equipment and hauling sand and created a berm around the leaking fuel thereby protecting storm sewer and fuel infiltration. So that was a big win there. Also, employees from Public Works arrived to ensure that water and sewer system was secure and proceeded to assist our police department with traffic control devices modifications. Fire Department had two engine companies, an ambulance, innocent commander, training officer, for a total of 10 personnel. Seven of those people are trained in hazardous material operations, and three were trained in hazardous material technician level. And I just wanted to point out the value of that training. The hazardous materials operation level is a 40-hour course, and the hazardous materials technician level is an 80-hour course. And so kudos to the Fire Department, Chief Snyder, Police Department, Chief Gull, Public Works, JD, and who worked as a team to make sure that this wasn't a worse disaster than it could have been. The biggest disaster was the traffic tie-up that it caused. So also big kudos to the private construction companies, Kramer and Walsh, and the state police that all responded to do that and take care of that. The one good news about this is the city is gathering data on the incident, including costs. And we have a spill ordinance, and so we'll be able to collect, hopefully, reimbursement for the expenses of managing and taking care of that cleanup. I think that's all I have.
I think there's a question for you, Alderman Wynn. Did you have a question on one of those items? I saw your hand go up.
The crack ceiling or the joint, did you email that out, or?
Yeah, it should have been, no. I dealt with a lot of stuff this week, so maybe I did. So I'll make sure it gets out.
The crack ceiling? Is he talking about the crack ceiling?
Yeah, like a map.
I only remember the storm one, so we'll double-check it.
It looks like I didn't get that out to you, but I will.
Alderman Wynn?
Yeah, and I was thinking back about what you were talking about, Tony answering those questions. I'm not sure if I got that email, if Tony's already answered those questions regarding the Stormwater. I don't think that that got sent to me. So I mean, if you can send it to the whole council, I don't think I got the email that had those questions answered, if that's already been answered.
I will make sure.
Alderman Potter?
Was there potentially any damage to the roadway on the tanker?
I don't believe so. There are no casualties, no injuries or anything, so.
Can you tell me what happened? I don't understand how they tipped over. Were they just going too fast?
Too fast, too fast.
So they weren't like avoiding that incident, or just not knowing how to drive a truck?
So, we called the Illinois State Police on some semi motor carrier accidents, and they did an investigation. I don't have my notes here, but I think I reported back to my colleagues that that trucking company has a pretty good reputation with the state. The state police did not issue them any traffic citations. It was simply kind of a, you know, one of those one-off incidents of an accident in that S-curve pattern in a large semi trying to navigate. That was the drivers new to that route as well. So I think there was a lot of factors in there, but they didn't find any fault with the semi rig itself or anything like that. So that's why they call them accidents.
So, yeah, understood, but sometimes we get ticketed for accidents, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So are we still able to collect the costs that we incurred if it was no fault of the trucking company?
I'd have to defer legal, but I believe it's just that the material was spilled. I think that's the trigger of the spill.
So they didn't contain their spill. Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else have any questions on the administrative update? I don't think so. I think you're off the hot seat. I'd now like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the council? Please approach the podium, and all you need to do is state your name, and you have a limit of three minutes.
Okay, we have a layer and council members. Thank you for attending some of us. It's a privilege for me to be here, thank you, especially since I haven't been out much because of the virus. I know you guys have a lot going on, obviously, it's pretty clear. And so I'll try to hurry up and get this said. We're here, my husband and I. I'm Kim Blaze, and my husband's Kevin. I'm here for us. We live at 1830 26th Avenue in Moline. And we entered into an agreement 10 years ago with our city. We complied with the city rules because we had to, we needed to, and we signed this agreement. And we were promised it could be renewed, and that other residents had done so before. That was 10 years ago before the meetings were recorded. That was 10 years ago before the meetings were recorded and the transparency started. And so this is about, what this is about is an agreement that we bought, we had to, we moved into an old, old home that nobody wanted and it sits on about two and a half acres in Moline and it was in disrepair, so it needed a new sewer. It was on a septic tank. So we put in, we had to put in a whole sewer main and it was about thirty thousand dollars. And at that time, the agreement says that the sewer extension would be of value to other adjoining property owners who may wish to use the same and that they may be required to pay a proportionate share of the cost, which would be basically for us to recoup on what we spent. And after the 10 years, the agreement's over. And so we're here to try to request to have a renewal of that agreement because I have a feeling that in the next couple of years, someone might want to tie into that sewer, which the sewer is really, I mean, the sewer main is actually a gift to the city in my opinion because it's going to be there long after we're gone. And so if anybody does tie into it after the agreement expires, we will have no recourse unless the council decides to renew it for another 10 years. Whether we're here or not, I don't know, but that's why I'm here to ask for this. If the council doesn't act on our behalf and someone ties into it with us living right next door, we're going to be very disappointed and it would definitely add insult to injury, I would say. I don't think we've got our twenty-six thousand dollars worth yet.
Well, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. We'll leave it to Marty to work with his team and find out the details of it and what's coming and what properties could potentially tie in and then we'll get back to you. If you could leave us some contact information, that'd be helpful.
I appreciate it.
You don't have to disclose it publicly, but maybe you could just put it on a note and give it to our corporate counsel, that'd be great.
Yes, I have, I have the agreement here too. I'd love to share with you if you'd like a copy.
That would be very helpful. If you could, if you could pass it over to Dirk, he will handle it. Thank you so much for sharing that concern with us. Is there any other public comments this evening? Do we have anybody?
We did not, thank you.
So I think that's it for our business in the committee of the whole. I'd like to close out of the committee of the whole and go into our council meeting this evening. We will be having an invocation by Alderman Parker, is that correct? You're on mute, Alderman Parker.
You are correct, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands. One nation, one
Nation, under God.
indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we thank thee for the blessings our city has received at your hands. We ask that thou will provide us wisdom, compassion, and courage as we complete the work of the city. At this time of turmoil throughout our land, we ask for patience and understanding for each other. We all, we may all be very different from each other, but what we do have in common is our desire for a better world. Please provide safety and protection for the first responders and healthcare workers who put our needs in front of theirs every day. In Christ's name, amen.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Wendt?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Schoonmaker? Sorry, Alderman Schoonmaker?
Present, sorry.
Berg?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole and council meeting minutes of August eighteenth, two thousand twenty.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second, Wendt.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Wendt. Roll call.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Wendt?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty twenty-four dash twenty twenty, an ordinance amending chapter twenty motor vehicles in traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix six, yield intersections by repealing Twenty-First Avenue's preference over Fourteenth Street.
Motion to approve thirty twenty-four twenty twenty, Parker.
Second, Wendt.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Wendt. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Wendt?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council Bill thirty twenty-five dash twenty twenty, an ordinance amending chapter twenty motor vehicles in traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix seven thereof, one-way streets by including an alley east of Sixteenth Street between Eighth Avenue and Ninth Avenue traveling northbound.
Motion to approve thirty twenty-five twenty twenty, Parker.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Wendt?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
Motion carries.
Resolutions. Council Bill ten ninety-three dash twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing the community economic development department to apply to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for a Strong Communities Program Round One Grant in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the city of Moline and authorizing city staff to do any and all things necessary to apply for the Strong Communities Program Grant Round One.
Motion approved, ten ninety-three twenty twenty, Parker.
Second, Wendt.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Wendt. Are there any questions or comments about this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Wendt?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye, I'm sorry, abstain.
Williams?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstention?
That motion carries.
Council Bill ten ninety-four dash twenty twenty, a resolution amending an intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Moline, East Moline, Silvis, and the county of Rock Island and the village of Mylan, which established an enterprise zone now called the Illinois Quad Cities Enterprise Zone by changing the zone boundaries to add territory to said zone and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the amended intergovernmental agreement.
Motion approved, ten ninety-four twenty twenty, Parker.
Second, Wendt.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Wendt. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Wendt?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
First reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty twenty-six dash twenty twenty, an ordinance amending Moline Ordinance number eighty-eight dash three dash two establishing an enterprise zone in the county of Rock Island, Illinois pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of East Moline, Illinois, Moline, Illinois, Silvis, Illinois, Rock Island County, Illinois, and the village of Mylan, Illinois by revising section three exhibits A and B to include new territory within the Quad Cities Enterprise Zone. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Jane.
Thank you.
So now we'll turn to council business. I'll go around the room and if you have an item, if you please share it with the council. Alderman Williams?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Parker.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Wendt.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have one thing. Recently, I was talking with Carol about the upcoming budget and kind of where we are with the COVID thing and, but really more towards her preparing to build next year's budget. And through that conversation, she had indicated that there are a number of things where she'd like to get some guidance from council on, on how to move forward regarding more kind of accounting standards and principles. And so she thought that it may be a little bit too in the weeds for a council meeting, but, and I thought that it might be appropriate that we have a little ad hoc committee to get together with her just to kind of go over those ideas and then come out of that with a recommendation to council because I think we need to, if we're going to do that, she needs to get working on this budget sooner than later. And so I was hoping that maybe the mayor would throw together a quick little ad hoc committee to have that conversation with Carol.
Can I ask a question? Carol? Carol? I think you're on mute, Carol. There you go.
No, yes, Your Honor.
We can hear you now. I have a question for you regarding that because I have been involved in some conversations, some stuff comes to me that doesn't come to the council floor. And I'm curious, do you see this as a discussion that would continue up to the point of our discussions about the budget or is it something beyond that? I'm just trying to figure out what the timeframe of a committee would be for something like that.
No, I think these are items that, I mean, frequently I'd even say that sometimes it's more under just the direction of the finance director to decide these types of things, but I want to be open because it is a change in procedure from what Moline has used. And so I really would like an opportunity to, I'm trying to streamline some of the processes as we go through the budget and I just want to make sure that the council's on board with that because things will be presented in a little bit of a different fashion regarding transfers, interdepartmental charges between departments. And then I also wanted to kind of get a heads up because I'm hoping to come to the council with a unbalanced policy.
So
So kind of those three items.
So I think in the light of your vision of wanting to be transparent, since we would be looking at the financial slightly differently, if we're going to account for the way we do interdepartment transfers, that a committee would be appropriate, but it feels like it should be done in open. So I guess if we were going to do that, that my preference would be, you know, maybe feedback from the council of who would like to be involved in that. You can reach out to me over this next week and then we can establish something and just have a process where we would allow the public to participate or at least listen in on those conversations just to make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on. Alderman Potter?
Why don't we just set aside some time at committee of the whole and deal with this issue? I see no reason why the entire council shouldn't be involved and I agree with you that I think the public should have an opportunity to see what sorts of changes we're making. I have no problem with doing that. We'll take whatever time it takes to work through this. I think it's a good idea to be transparent and I think it's the job of all of us to work on the budget.
Carol, is there, what kind of investment of time do you think it would be to work through the issues that you're wanting to pursue?
I would think that we could accomplish it within an hour.
Okay.
Because I was just wanting to kind of speak to it and just broadly inform the council of some streamlining that I think would have a positive impact on the accounting.
So Janine, I'm turning to you. Do you know when our next work's due, Miss?
We were looking at doing a CIP on the fifteenth, but I don't know, Marty, what we just decided on that?
It would be later this month because it would be probably the last Tuesday of this month.
The last Tuesday of this?
Would be the open date.
Does that give you enough time, Carol, if we wait for, so we don't have a meeting next week? We have plans for the fifteenth and so it would be the week after that. Does that still give you enough time, the direction? Alderman Potter, did you need to say something right now?
Well, I just thought, why don't we flip it? I think budget is obviously, we're probably more likely to be headed towards working on the budget than we are, I don't think it would hurt if we put the CIP back another week. Let's have that budget conversation.
I would argue back on that because the CIP is very critical because we know we have more money available and it's quite urgent to get those projects going because the engineering is what has been historically our issue here, why things get held up.
But
So I think they're both urgent.
Well, I agree, but you're dealing with the end of the, the January first is budget deadline. I don't think we'll be breaking ground with any projects on January first. You know, you heard from staff, it's not likely we're going to put a shovel on the ground on any additional CIP projects yet this year based on availability of equipment, engineering, and all that other thing.
Do you mind if I ask Carol about the timing?
Sure.
Carol, if we waited until the third meeting in September, or the third week in September, third meeting in September as well, would that give you enough time if those, depending on what policies come out of that, to do your preparation for the budget or is that too long to wait for you to prepare for your budget?
To be honest, I would like it to be prior to that. We can certainly compile the budget the way we have done in the past, but I really was hoping to streamline it. So if by chance we could meet earlier, even on the fifteenth would be helpful.
Alderman Parker?
Since it's just a one-off thing, is there a way to do a special meeting next Tuesday? I know it's right after Labor Day, but it's, you know, Tuesday. Just for this one topic?
What's the, I'm a little bit worried about getting quorum. So what's the, what's the status? Who can attend if we have a meeting next Tuesday? No Alderman Williams, is that right? And I don't think Alderman Waldron's back yet. Alderman Schoonmaker, I can't see her.
I probably won't be able to attend either. I think we're going to be out of town.
I'll be out of town as well, Mayor. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there any way that maybe yourself and maybe another alderman or two could meet with Carol ahead of time and then bring something back to us to the next meeting? Is that possible? Maybe you guys can meet off, you know, sideline and then bring something back so then that way we kind of have more, you know, we're not digging deep into it. This way maybe if you guys bring a proposal back or bring some bullet points, you know, bullet points back to us, is that, is that something that can be done?
That would be an option. Alderman Wendt? Alderman Wendt, you're on mute.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sorry about that. If we've got some issues with the entire council and this is kind of why I was suggesting an ad hoc because I thought it was going to have to be an extra meeting and so, I mean, and if we have three or more council people on this ad hoc group, it's going to be public. And so if there's aldermen that couldn't make it and then could make it, they could come because it's going to be open to the public. And so I think we may be hamstringing ourselves a little bit if we try to make it into a specific council meeting. A decision isn't going to be made in this group. It's going to be kind of talking about these, these things in the weeds and then coming back with a, with a proposal on how she's going to build the budget. And along those lines, I, from my conversation with, with Carol, doing it sooner than later because it's going to change how she builds this budget, which is basically the skeleton of the whole thing. And so I think we need to do it sooner than later. So I mean, I guess maybe I would propose that we even try to do an open meeting, maybe a Friday afternoon if there's a few aldermen and I'd be more than willing to do it as well that can, can make it so that we can get this done. So then at the fifteenth meeting, we can then vote if this is, if we're going in the right direction and give Carol direction then.
So I think my, my thought on it is that we can, we can protect the quorum issue. Dirk, do I have the authority to, to set up an ad hoc committee for one meeting?
Yes, with the Yes, with the consent of council.
Okay. So I would make a recommendation to the council that I set an ad hoc committee that any council member that is interested in participating, please let me know by the end of the day tomorrow and then we will work out the scheduling conflict. It would have to be posted two days ahead of time in order to meet the open meetings requirement. And I would also suggest that we participate in this council chamber so that we can have a recorded discussion for the public to view if it's not convenient time for them to view it or participate. So that would be my recommendation to the council.
Motion to approve that recommendation, Parker?
Second, Wendt.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Wendt. Is there any discussion on that? Alderman Berg?
I have a question. Is there any way that we could do that? I know you, you, you're asking for everyone to let you know by tomorrow at the end of day. I thought Alderman Went just said something about Friday. Will that be the two, two day? Will that give you time for two days? You said at the end of the day tomorrow, which is Wednesday.
No, that wouldn't. It would have to be.
Can we, since we're all here, can we just say today to let you know before the end of the, the meeting or at the end of the meeting?
Your Honor, if it's an open meeting, why does, why do you have to know who's on it before you post it?
Oh, because I have to, I have to be able to establish quorum. If I can't get four people here, I won't have quorum.
No, I thought you meant for, I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's why I was
For your ad hoc meeting, you don't have to have four, do you?
No, I don't. So if, if we proclaim it, that's, I, I thought that Alderman Parker was suggesting it just be a regular council meeting, a special meeting. That's a different category. I'm, I'm suggesting that it be an ad hoc committee meeting. Because if we do a special meeting, we still have to have council.
Yeah, but everybody's touching the right thing. You got to have a number. If, if, if it's an ad hoc committee of the entire council, then you've got to have a quorum of people. If it's a committee of three or four, then we know when we have a quorum and we also define whatever talk we're having was to whether that's a meeting or not. Because remember for groups of five or less, two people can still talk, but then you need three to recommend anything.
Okay.
So we need a number of who's in, of what this committee is comprised of.
Could I please have a, a roll call on who wants to be in the committee, who wants to participate in that separate discussion? Can you give me a head count on that?
Sure. Alderman Parker?
Yes.
Went?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Schoemaker?
Yes.
Berg?
No.
Williams?
Nay.
I'm sorry, was that?
He said nay.
Okay. So we've got five that have said yes.
So I'm gonna, I can't really amend a motion, so if somebody wants to amend the motion of approval, we'd set the ad hoc committee five people and then we would plan for Friday afternoon.
Your Honor, I amend by motion to have it read five people and have it be Friday afternoon.
Second.
So we have amendment and we have a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay?
That amendment carries. We'll now discuss the amended motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the amended motion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay?
Motion carries. Alderman Went, did you have anything else this evening?
Uh, no, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Potter?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer?
No, Your Honor.
Alderman Schoemaker?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Berg?
No, Your Honor.
And so I just had one thing I wanted to mention that I had received a sticker publication from a hate group in, in my yard. I wasn't sure about any other council members if they had received such thing or if any of the other community members had. But we've had an experience with this before. Chief Galt had propagated it when there were some flyers that were distributed in our community. And I just, I think that it is a moment of reflection that there is hateful people among us and it's our responsibility to overcome that hate and build up our community. I think that these hate groups are a burden to our community. And I think that it's all of our responsibilities from leadership to every single resident to, to help build up our tolerance and our partnership and our community mindedness. So I just wanted to make that statement that that had happened. Um, is, I don't think I have anything else, so how about staff? Does anyone on staff want to address the council? Thank you. Janine is working on our liquor licenses through the new portal and how's that going?
It's going well. We've asked all of our liquor licensees to go in and set up their profile. Actually, Live Stories kind of set those up for them and they just had to log in and take a load, upload any additional documents. And then tomorrow they will receive an email letting them know that they can renew their license and it should be a lot easier for them. So we're hoping that we can do a really good job for our partners.
Well, thank you for your extra efforts to make it more convenient for our businesses.
Thank you.
Okay, what else do we have this evening? Anyone?
We, yes, Alderman Williams?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C1.
Second, Parker?
We have a motion by Alderman Williams, a second by Alderman Potter. Roll call.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
We're now